Okay, this evening, we're going to be doing our meeting dealing with our budget vote. I'd like to get a motion to go to public session. Can, okay, good Julie and I see Amy, all in favor? Hi, okay, I guess at this time I'm going to, oh, we're going to do the pledge?
Yes.
Okay, so we all stand for, oh, Julie's got the flag and we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
To the Republic.
For the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. All right, at this time. Are we going to do the announcement of the chairperson? So am I going to turn over to you, James?
We're going to adjourn from the regular board meeting.
Okay.
To go to the.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn from the regular board meeting, please? Okay, I got Mark McIntyre, Amy, all in favor? Hi. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Payalano. So this is the budget hearing portion of our meeting, which is required each and every year, just a bit tardy this year because of the postponement of the annual budget vote and school board election. First and foremost, the vote date is technically Tuesday, June 9th. However, there's a big asterisk there that is the vote date, but the vote is being done all by mail this year, as we know. There will be no in-person voting for the school board election, school budget vote, library budget vote, and library board of trustees voting will all be done by mail. So although the election date is Tuesday, June 9th, all of the action on the part of our community members must be done prior to June 9th. All ballots, all absentee ballots must be received. And that's the big term, received, not necessarily returned, but received by the office of the district clerk, my office, no later than 5:00 PM on June 9th. So as I mentioned earlier, ballots are being brought to the, have been brought to the postal facility today. They should start arriving in homes, I would say, one to three days from now. It's important that our residents look out for this mailing. It'll be clearly identified from the school district and has election mailing, and they should complete those ballots right away and put them back into the return envelope and send back to us so that we can ensure that those are received by 5:00 PM on Tuesday the 9th. Any ballots that come in after June 9th at 5:00 PM cannot be counted. Before we begin with the formal presentation, I just wanted to speak for a moment about the school board election. We have three positions open on the school board for three-year terms beginning on July 1st, 2020, and we have four candidates that you will see on the ballot. Those candidates in ballot order, which for this year is also alphabetical order, will be Tara Belfi, Janice Elkin, Mark Freiberg, and Heather Morante Young. So at this point, if it's okay with the board, Mr. Payalano, I'd like to start our short presentation on what we will be voting on.
Please do.
Okay, can everybody see our, my screen?
I can, yes.
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 And for our viewers at home, you can see it on the screen now, and if you would like to look at this presentation in more detail later, it's also already posted on our website under the budget tab, Budget 2020-2021 on our website. So looking at overall budget highlights, the proposed budget for the 2020-2021 school year will be $71,92,749. This represents a 1.16% increase over this current year's budget or $817,932. Tax levy that will be required to support this budget will be $65,819,125. This is a levy-to-levy increase of $957,606 or 1.48%. What's very important, which is what is at the bottom of your screen, and that this tax levy is $1,038,607 below the tax levy limit that's prescribed by New York State law. Again, this tax levy that is proposed with this budget for 2020-2021 is $1,038,000 below the tax levy limit. Tax levy limit for the Cold Spring Harbor School District for next year was 3.08%, and this tax levy that's being proposed is 1.48%. We'll take a look at our voting procedures because they are very different this year. As I had mentioned earlier, there will be no in-person voting for this particular school budget vote or member election, as well as the library budget vote and the library board of trustee election. This is unlike the primary that will take place at the end of June, which will have in-person voting or absentee voting. All of our voting again will be by mail only. All qualified voters who are registered to vote, and that's very important, you must be registered to vote to automatically receive two ballots from us. They will come in one envelope, and one ballot will be for the school district and one ballot will be for the public library. And again, they will come in a single envelope together by mail. Once received and once completed, and we do urge you to complete these ballots as soon as you possibly can and not to let them sit. Both ballots must be placed in the oath envelope, which must be signed on the back. And again, the oath envelope is clearly identified and has a statement on the back that the voter must sign. The name on the oath envelope, on the front of the oath envelope, which we pre-printed, must match the voter and the signature on the back. That oath envelope must be placed in the self-addressed business envelope, business reply envelope, and mailed back. Business reply envelope clearly states that postage is already paid and is addressed to the office of the district clerk at the Cold Spring Harbor School District. Again, it's important that ballots must be received no later than 5:00 PM on June 9th, 2020. And it's important, if any questions exist, please contact me, the district clerk, and I will be sure to respond quickly with answers to your questions. It's also important to note again that the library budget and trustee election will be combined with the school district budget vote and Board of Education election. There will be two separate ballots in your envelope. It's important to complete both. The school district will be green, the library will be blue. So please do complete both. And remember, the school district ballot is double-sided, so please flip it over, and that's clearly indicated on the ballot as well. Few highlights, the main highlights for the proposed budget for next year is that it provides the needed flexibility to quickly and appropriately address a myriad of scenarios for next school year. And as we've spoken many times at our prior meetings, we don't know yet what September will look like. And this, therefore, we needed to create a budget that really could address the different types of issues that we may encounter, challenges, scenarios for how the school day may look, because we don't have those answers. So we needed to provide a budget that could be flexible. Also, as I mentioned, it results in a tax levy that's $1,038,000 below the limit dictated by the law, recognizing the financial hardship facing our members of our community. It also addresses a possible mid-year reduction of state aid. I would say this is not possible. It is going to happen. We've been told by the governor it's going to happen. We're just not sure how much. It has been estimated to be as high as 20%. So this budget was built with the understanding that although we have not received any final numbers from the state of New York, yet we expect less state aid than what was shared earlier with us, and that these decisions won't be made until sometime during next year, and could be made multiple times during next year, because the New York State budget was approved in April. He gave the governor the power to, on a quarterly basis with his division of budget, to revise the state aid estimates for school districts. So the budget had to be provided to provide the ability for the district to cope with those sudden losses of revenue. In addition, with all that said, this proposed budget does maintain all programs and initiatives. It preserves class-side guidelines. It continues our vast co-curricular athletic and art offerings, however we may be able to offer them in the next school year. It provides for additional flexible furniture options and expanded technology. It redefines our classroom experience by continuing to replace outdated technology with the purchase of state or the art Promethean boards. It continues our one-on-one Chromebook initiative for all students at the junior, senior high school, which is especially important right now. It's also important to note that there's a considerable amount of technology available at our primary and elementary levels due to this program, both iPads and Chromebooks. So this is very, very important. It includes extensive professional development for our teachers, which again is another very important component of the budget for next year, because we do need to plan for a myriad of scenarios, as I mentioned, and that includes how we're going to deliver instruction and how we're going to address needs that arose this year that we need to tackle next year. It continues our partnership with the Cold Spring Harbor Laboratory and DNA Learning Center. It has funds for arts programs, including our partnership with Huntington Arts Council and our very unique partnership with the Lincoln Center Education Program that both West High and Boy Harbor participate in, and that's very unique to Cold Spring Harbor. Contains approval for new three-year transportation contracts. There's actually five new contracts that will approve those multi-year agreements, and appropriates $900,000 in capital construction funds transferring from the general fund budget to the capital fund to provide additional authorizations for the following projects: the fieldhouse locker room reconstruction, the ground storage building construction at the junior, senior high school, the performing arts center house lighting replacement, and the district-wide interior door replacement with armored one glass and security hardware. This is just to charge, providing a summary of both our revenue and expenditure budget. If you look at our expenditure revenue budget to begin with, the property tax levy is by far the largest part of our revenue stream and for most school districts in New York State. And again, that's $65.8 million is well below the tax levy limit prescribed by the law. That's followed by the $3.4 million in state support that we are right now expecting to receive. With regard to this number, we did reduce our foundation aid, and that's your general basic state operating aid. We did reduce that number by 20% in anticipation of those mid-year reductions that we spoke about. We must alert you that it could be more than that. It could be 20% of all of our state aid, which would include our expense-based aid such as BOSI's building aid and transportation aid. We're feeling confident for right now that taking that reduction in foundation aid will be enough, but have built-in contingencies in the budget in case it goes further than that. For other revenues, $619,000 includes items such as our pilots and our interest income, which is projected to decrease significantly for next year. Appropriative fund balance, which increased from this year to next year, and that's really to accommodate some unspent donation funds and equipment money that will roll over into the next school year. And also an increase in our appropriated reserves by $150,000, recognizing the shortfall that we had with the state aid, so an additional $150,000 from the retirement contribution reserve, in addition to the $250,000 that we already are taking from the employee benefit accrued liability reserve. On the expenditure side, you'll see, as should be, all school budgets, the largest portion, $37.4 million, is related to our instructional codes. If you look at our line-by-line budget, it is all of our budget codes that begin with a 2, and that's followed by our employee benefits portion of the budget, and that Royal Blue at 15.88 million dollars. And it's important to note again that school districts don't manufacture things. We're people-intensive organizations, and therefore, over 70% of our budget is salary and benefits, because again, we're educating students and we're using a larger number of personnel. Therefore, as you'll see, the $37.4 million in instruction, which contains all of our teacher salaries plus and the employee benefits, that is a majority of our school budget in any school budget in the state of New York or actually in the country. We'll follow that by general support at $8.1 million. That is our back office operations, such as the office of the superintendent, the finance office, personnel, legal matters, data processing, as well as the largest component of that 8.1 million, our buildings and grounds department, which includes our custodial maintenance and grounds. After that, we have our transportation contracts at $5.3 million, almost $5.4 million. And as I mentioned, we have five new three-year agreements, which are included in the budget for approval by the voters as a multi-year agreement. Our debt service at $3.5 million that pays our outstanding bonds and energy performance contract. We have our community services, that is $1,000 we place in the budget for our census if we need to be. And also finally, our inter-fund transfer, which contains $900,000 transferred to the capital fund, which I just mentioned on the earlier slide, and $45,000, which is our local share of our special education extended year summer program. And these are just the percentage increases and decreases in each category, and I'll just highlight again, overall state aid is decreasing 13%, predominantly because we reduced our foundation aid allotment by 20%. But again, this number could be higher, and we won't know, and we could find out at any time during next year, and we'll need to accommodate for any further reductions. Increase in pilots just by 2.34%, that's related to the one pilot we have in the district, which is on the Nassau County side with LIPA. Other revenue is decreasing. Again, I mentioned that we expect interest rates, they've already decreased substantially, and we expect them to continue to decrease, so we won't be making as much on the investment of the district funds. We, fund balance increased by 44.55%, and that's related to rolling over those funds that I mentioned from the equipment and the donation that we received from the foundation. Our reserves increased 60%. We added in addition $50,000 in reserves to offset some state aid restrictions. And our property tax levies, I mentioned, will increase 1.48% instead of the 3.08% that was prescribed under the law. And overall, our total revenue will increase 1.16%. As we are required to have a balanced budget, our expenditures will also overall increase 1.16%. You'll see a small increase in general support and actually a reduction slightly, seven tenths of a percent in instruction. That's related to some reduction in staff, reduction in teaching staff due to declining enrollment. You'll see an 18.35% increase in transportation contracts. The district was required to issue a new request for proposals for transportation contracts, and on average, we saw about a 22%, 23% increase in unit price on average for those five contracts, and that's why you'll see that big jump. Again, this will be a multi-year contract, and the remaining two years of this contract will increase by 3.5%. No change in community services and a small decrease, six tenths of a percent employee benefits, really because we received favorable health benefits surprisingly in 2020, where the actual health premiums to the estate insurance plan, which our district belongs to, actually decreased for the first time, I think, in history. So we were very fortunate to see that decrease, and that's, that relates to next year's budget as well. And our inter-fund debt service, that increases really due to the $200,000 increase in the transfer to capital funds. This year, we were at $700,000, and next year we'll move to $900,000. And again, overall, 1.16% increase. We are required to break the budget into three components, the program, capital, and administrative components of the budget. And as we should expect and should always see, preponderance of the budgets relate to program, instruction, anything that relates to instruction, that's 75% of the overall budget. That's followed by the capital portion of the budget. This is all of our buildings and grounds functions, as well as all of our capital construction at 16%. And finally, our administrative component. This is again, those back office operations with regard to finance, legal, personnel, data processing, et cetera. It does not mean administrators. It just means administrative functions that obviously support the classroom. So that's our three-part component budget. We have two additional propositions on the ballot this year, and proposition two will be to transfer an amount not to exceed $750,000 from the district's unassigned fund balance as of June 30th, 2020. And this is the 4% number that we often speak about. This is our unassigned, undesignated fund balance. So we would take $750,000 from that fund as of June 30th, and we replace existing faucets in the upper synthetic turf field at Cold Spring Harbor Junior Senior High School. Again, these funds have already been saved. They're already in cash on the district's balance sheet, so there would be no impact on the approval of proposition two. There would be no impact on the tax levy or taxes. Proposition three would be to authorize the creation of capital reserve number four, which would have a limit of $15 million in deposits plus applicable interest over a 15-year term to complete future capital construction projects, and therefore alleviate the need of future additional long-term borrowings. And as we know, the capital reserve program has worked really well in this district and allowed us to do quite a bit of capital construction work, reconstruction, renovation, maintenance, repair, et cetera. So again, this would be $15 million in deposits over 15 years. If we, if, you know, it would not be $15 billion in one year. It's whatever may be remaining at the end of the year. The board can decide to place money into that fund or not. It's also important to note this only authorizes the district to create the fund, to spend the fund, to spend any money from this fund. We would need additional voter approval for a specific project. So this is only for deposits, not for withdrawals. That would be a future vote. So that's propositions two and three. Also, we have a school board election. We have four candidates who are running for three seats with three-year terms beginning July 1st, 2020, and the candidates are listed in alphabetical order this particular year, which will be ballot order, and that's Tara Belfi, Janice Elkin, Mark Freiberg, and Heather Morante Young. And that's your school board election. Important to note about the school district ballot, the school board election is on one side of the ballot, and the budget vote and two propositions are on the reverse side. It is clearly marked, bolded, please turn over for the school board election, or please turn over for the budget and propositions. So please remember that the ballot is double-sided for the school district. For complete budget details, including the line-by-line revenue and expenditure budget, you can log on to our website at any time and click on the link Budget 2020-2021 at the top of page. And if you have any voting questions at all, please email me, the district clerk, and my email address is there. Any questions at all with regard to the process, please feel free to send an email, and we will respond as soon as we possibly can. And at this point, I will turn it over to any questions that anyone may have.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, I just would like to say excellent job, Mr. Stuccio, and it was very clear, so thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And we, I checked my email, and nobody has emailed in questions about the budget. Just a reminder to our viewers at home, you can email us questions that you have for the board, since we are unable at this point to have in-person board meetings. So you can still email me until the end of the meeting, and my email address is on the agenda, which is posted on the website. If it's okay, Mr. Payalano, I just wanted to turn it over briefly to Mr. Podeau from the Cold Spring Harbor Library, who will provide a few highlights of the library budget.
Hi, thank you. Just a couple of things. First, I want to thank Mr. Fenter and Mr. Stuccio for all the great work that they've done helping us out with this very unusual election year. We were hoping to have our election in April, early April. Of course, that couldn't happen. So I really do appreciate the help of the administration and the school board. We have some good news. As you know, Long Island is going into phase one, which for us means that staff didn't come back to work, non-essential staff, as of June 1st. And we're hoping for a phase-two patron opening on June 15th. And that would mean restricted access, really only to the lobby for drop-off and pickup, and that's how New York State, you know, would make us do it at the beginning. But if we get to phase three, we'll see more expensive use by patrons, and of course, phase four even more so. So it's very good news for us. The staff is very excited to be getting back into the building, and we're looking forward to seeing patrons hopefully by mid-June. I do hope that you've been taking advantage of all the online resources and virtual resources that we've been providing since we closed in mid-March. There's been a lot of online storytimes for children, and we've been using our YouTube channel and Facebook. So hopefully, you've been using our eBooks and found some ways to use our library resources even when we weren't open. Getting to the budget, this year's budget is a 1.81% tax levy increase, which is in compliance with New York State. And the total number, I'll just check my notes, is a $50,963 increase in your tax levy. So certainly a much smaller budget than you're used to hearing from the school district, but we like to think that reason that money is efficiently as possible, provide resources for the community. What else can I tell you? The increases are largely in eBooks, which were very popular even before the pandemic, and have become even more popular during. So there's, that's a cost that we share with other libraries in Suffolk County as part of the Suffolk Cooperative Library System. So that's a fixed cost that we need to cover. And we're also adding money to our programming budget for both children, teens, adults, and summer reading. Now, since we won't be able to have too many people in the building for a while, those programs will be virtual, as they have been for the past few months, and will continue that way in the future. When we are lucky enough to get everyone back, we'll have a healthy program budget for all ages. There are four people running this year for trustee positions. We have two, Janice Rothstein and Helen Weinstein, are running for three-year terms, and Chris Higandreas and Dr. Ned Price are running for two-year terms, because they're filling out the terms of previous trustees, which positions they were appointed to fill. That's pretty much it. I really appreciate your time, and again, thank you so much for the assistance. There'll be budget information on our website. If you have any questions, you can email me at r p o d e l l at c s h library dot org, or you can simply call, and we'll be happy to get back to you. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you, Roger. Okay, James, at this time, do I go back to a motion to return to public session or? Wait, you're, you're, you're blank.
You're on mute, James.
You gotta unmute.
I got it. It's like that video I sent out. I just checked again. There are no further questions on the budget that I received, so yes, you can take a motion to return to the regular meeting.
Okay, so can I get a motion to turn back to the regular board meeting? I see Janice, Amy, okay, all in favor? Okay, so at this time, I guess we're going to go to the business recommendations.
Well, at this point, Mr. Payalano, we have the regular audience to visitors, and I do have a something from a member of the community. This is from Stephanie Denazi, and if it's okay, I'll read what she has for the board. "Good evening, everyone. I hope you and your families are healthy and doing well. Thank you for the hard work everyone is doing to navigate the mostly multifaceted challenges this pandemic has created. On top of daily life, you are also charged with trying to figure out how best to honor and recognize our graduating seniors. It would be helpful to get an update on the options presently being considered. Additionally, I have spoken to many senior parents. They would like to share just one or two of many suggestions for further discussion and consideration. Senior and parents only arrive on campus in one car and sit together socially distanced on the fields. Student can walk up to receive a diploma from the table and take a photo, again socially distanced from administration, posing by a six-foot banner. Stage on turf with the live streams, so it can be seen from all angles, and senior and parents are on track grounds going around, on the track going around, six-foot markers allowing for distancing after speeches. Seniors and parents move around the track as each student goes up. Parent goes in front to take a photo and exits to the car. Please keep in mind, there are many more details, but for the sake of time, I'm keeping it to 30,000 feet. I would be happy to share logistical details via Zoom or voice call if deemed appropriate. Once again, I know that our goal as a community is the same, celebrate our seniors in a safe, yet impactful and memorable way. Senior year is the one thing you can't relive. You lost half of it, so I'm hopeful the last memory made at Cold Spring Harbor High School leaves them feeling accomplished and recognized. Thank you for everything you are doing every day, Stephanie Denazi."
Okay. Bob, would you like to answer that?
Sure, Mr. Payalano, thank you. Yes, we, I think we all agree that the, the board and our leaders and our teachers and our students really all want the same thing, and that's to have an in-person ceremony. Currently, the guidelines provided by New York State do not permit gatherings of that size, and so we are limited to our options at this point. As we have shared at previous meetings, Dr. Bolin and the staff are working hard to provide options for us to consider. First, the first preferred option would be just as Mrs. Denazi mentioned. Currently, we're unable to do that. However, the ceremony is scheduled for July 8th, and we will watch carefully any changes to the guidelines that were provided by the governor for such gatherings. Should the school not be able to create such a ceremony as was described, we do have opportunities to have a gathering, but by having people safely stay in their cars and do a drive-in type ceremony. As we all know, what we all would like is for the students to have that opportunity to celebrate this moment together, this iconic moment together, but we also have to do so in a manner that protects our students, our staff, and our parents' community safety. So we are working hard to provide the very best experience we can for our students, and we will continue to do that, keeping an eye on the guidance that's provided to us by New York State.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions?
Only question I received.
Okay, all right. So then at this time, I'm going to move to the next part on the agenda, business recommendations. Budget transfers, there's two budget transfers. The first one, be resolved that the Board of Education approved the attached budget line transfer transfer of $21,530 for additional technology supplies. And the second budget transfer is that the Board of Education approved the attached budget line transfer of $69,197 to cover additional BOSI's expenses related to the purchase of instructional technology. Can I get a? Can I get a motion on those two? Amy, somebody, Julie, okay? Any comments? James, would you like to just explain those a little bit?
So both of these transfers are related to additional needs that we had due to the digital learning plan. A large part of the transfer for BOSI's was the purchase of additional Chromebooks, which we do through BOSI's to take advantage of the BOSI's aid, as well as their purchasing cooperative. And the supplies as well are related to items that we're purchasing to support the digital learning plan, including styluses and headphones and other such items for our students.
Does anyone else have any other comments before we take a vote? All right, so can I, all in favor? All right, James, show that everybody has voted in favor. At this time, I guess we'll take a motion for the adjournment of the meeting. Can I get a motion? Julie, Janice, all in favor?